I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Mr. Hazel.
Here.
Mr. Consilla.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Bitner.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Tyler.
Here.
Mr. Anthony.
Here.
Mr. Ovian.
Here.
Dr. Silsby.
Here.
Mr. Gentleman.
Here.
Mr. Cybert.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Galetti.
Here.
Mr. Elmore.
Here.
Mr. Wiggington.
Here.
Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
All aldermen are present, roll call of department heads.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Tim Gregowitz. Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belleville.
Here.
Anissa McCaskill.
Mike Parks is here for Chuck Schaefer. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would join me and please stand as we do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in the visible liberty and justice of all.
I'm going to ask that you bear with me for one minute before we start public participation. And I'm going to ask Bailey Gwynne, a senior from Belleville West, to come to the microphone and please address us about the character words so that she can get home and do homework like all of us would like to see our kids. Bailey?
Hi, my name is Bailey Gwynne, like he said. I'm a senior at Belleville West High School and I am a member of the Belleville Achieves Strength and Character Youth Leadership Board. Today, I'm here to talk to you about responsibility, which is the character word of the month. And here I have in our agenda, the responsibility is the willingness to be accountable for your own actions without blaming others. And I know sometimes that can be really hard to be responsible, like, you know, in a small setting, like a group project at school, up to here and even further along on the legislative branches. It can be difficult to be responsible, but it's something that we all need to keep in mind as we go through our lives.
Bailey, thank you for being here with us, okay? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to now jump back to, there's no public hearings this evening. We're going to jump back to public participation. I will ask you in just a moment, for those who want to address the meeting, to raise your hands, I will recognize you. At that time, you'd come to the microphone, state your name. Try to keep your comments to two to three minutes and we're hoping that it's possibly got something to do with tonight's agenda. I will repeat, doesn't have to, but we're asking that, we are going to, for the zoning cases. Anissa, we don't have the application yet, do we? Or, I know they said possibly Tuesday. So that zoning meeting is not sent yet, but we're tentatively looking at the end of the month. End of, because of the posting time, somewhere around the 28th, 29th of the month is a potential of the hearing for that for that case dealing with Lindenwood. And certainly everyone would be able to speak that night, as well as when it goes to the council following that. So I just reiterate that. So is there also tonight, please use good character when you speak. And I think that's about it. So whoever wants to speak tonight, raise your hand. The gentleman at back of the room has his hand up first tonight. You, back there, sir?
Thank you. I'm not too good, but I'm a little nervous, but anyway.
Your name, sir?
Douglas Parker.
Okay.
Been in Belleville for 12 years now. And make a long story short about Lindenwood. We have Lindenwood kids coming up in my neighborhood right now, firing off shotguns in the neighborhood. Their parents, anyway, with Lindenwood, it's not good right now. And they're firing out shotguns. My neighbor told me, because he has access to some of them, and some of the Lindenwood kids are firing out shotguns in my alley. And we're all scared. And that's all I got to say.
I would hope if anybody hears that, that they call the police immediately. Please do.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, yes ma'am? Yes. Front row.
Two negative. Lily and Schneider sewer and trash bills are paid. And when you are all wondering when I say six water shut-off notices, if you go to the city's website and under the FOIA's, you will see my FOIA and you will see what I'm talking about. My first problem is Mount Pleasant newly oiled and chipped, holes in road sinking. Parking lot in road there are holes where it was washed away. There needs to be guardrails. Are there's going to be an injury or fatality accident waiting to happen? Which the state will get a copy of all the pictures I've taken. Lindenwood. Curtains to be used as doors are against violations. Many questions. Do the parents of these students really know what's going on? Where their students are living in a dwelling, safety violations and not zoned properly? Word of the month, responsibility. Practice what you preach. It should not be only for us, it should be for the whole city. There was an article in the paper that Mayor Eckert wrote. Since the purchase by Lindenwood, of $1, it should have said, because they didn't really purchase that, a dollar for all that? Let's get real. Yes, we are experiencing growing pains, but we are working through them together while remaining equally concerned about our citizens and addressing their needs. That's a joke. If that would be any other citizen or a landlord that the city does not like, they would have been fined by now and the students or people, adults, whatever, children would have gotten out of the structure. It's just wrong. I would like to know if I put my house up for rent and take my bedroom doors down and put up a nice bright orange-red curtain like Channel 5 News showed, would I be ticketed? Would I be fined? Or any other landlord, would they be fined? Or any homeowner, would they be fined? Yes, they would. It's who you know and what you know. It is wrong. Lindenwood should have these kids out of these houses, whatever you want to call them, until it is zoned properly. And the parents should know and be notified of what's going on. There's been no comments. Do the parents, have they been sent letters to really know what's going on where they have dropped their children, young adults, off to live? I bet not one parent knows about it or has received a letter, experiencing the problems that they may have to come get their kid because it is not zoned properly for that many kids to be in that structure.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, blue shirt.
Noah Brimmer. Who gave the advice to allow so many students to move in without variance already in place? After the city was made aware of the lack of the variance, why has nothing been done to resolve the situation? Are there any steps currently being taken to bring LU into compliance? Or are we going to continue to see these numbers of students occupying these homes in violation of the current ordinance? Mayor, how relevant is the difference between A1 and A2 zoning? The requirement's the same, one kitchen per unit. Any more kitchens and it makes it a two-family household. So, one kitchen, three unrelated adults. On September 23rd, Mayor, you were quoted in the Bellevue News-Democrat saying, "I believe in all my heart, people's property values are better today than they were 10 to 12 years ago before Lindenwood started making any initiative to improve that area." On the whole, I would agree with that statement, but I also find it a bit deceptive. It's been a long road in recovering from the national housing bubble. What comforts would you offer a homeowner in the central corridor who has seen the value of their home decrease by 34% over the last five-year period? As Lindenwood has come in and rescued Belleville by purchasing more and more homes well below previously established market values for the area? And all of this is happening while the housing market is on the rise. On October 4th, you were quoted in the News-Democrat as saying, "Since the purchase of Lindenwood, police calls to the apartments on North 27th Street have virtually disappeared." While I applaud the work that Lindenwood has done, how much of this reduction is due to the calls now being made to LU Public Safety and not being to the police? As a husband and parent in that neighborhood, where I'm quickly being surrounded by LU students, I'm more than a little concerned about the fact that since September, there were two sexual assaults at Lindenwood Housing that went unreported to the news and thus to the community. If not for my conversations with some of the students, I wouldn't have found out. Are there fewer service calls to the police department because the situation is really getting better? Or is it that someone put a pretty facade on the building and installed their own security team to deal with these situations so they're being swept under the public rug to protect public image? Finally, let's get to this pittance of a compromise that's been proposed. Inspecting houses annually is a great step and I applaud that. It's one I don't think the city should back away from. But 10 students per house is still too many. As you said, on October 4th, most houses in question house six students. Based on my personal experience, I doubt those numbers, but I will tell you this. Six students, if we're assuming that that's true, is still too many. Your compromise does nothing to resolve the quality of life concerns that I and so many of my neighbors here have brought both before you and Lindenwood. The number of students currently living in as of yet unapproved student dwellings continues to provide both a degradation in the average quality of day-to-day life for non-student residents and a safety concern for both students and non-students alike. Since the compromise number 10 is above the average number that you've provided, six. And since issues continue to exist enough that we continue to come week after week at or above those housing levels, you're not actually proposing a meaningful change. Please take your compromise legislation back to the drawing board and come back when you have something that might actually address the issues being presented. Remember, you're the mayor of Belleville, you're not the mayor of Lindenwood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Stuart Leonard, South 29th, 318 South 29th Street. 27th Street in West Main, there was a wedge of land there where there was a hobby shop for a number of years and it was given to Lindenwood free of charge. Now, half of the property, I looked, I got the maps from the courthouse, half of the property is listed as Linden University and the other half is listed as Lindenwood University Corporation. Now, why would they list one half of this property as Lindenwood Corporation when the other parts is Lindenwood University? And this business, this fiction, paying a dollar for that school is total BS because ever since 2003, the taxpayers have been paying Lindenwood $150,000 a year. That would have bought quite a number of police cars and other police officers. And a two-bedroom house is a two-bedroom house, no matter where it's zoned at, as far as I'm concerned. Lindenwood treated Belleville taxpayers, the mayor and aldermen like a bunch of hicks and they did whatever they wanted. Where did that billion dollars Lindenwood claims they put into the Belleville economy go? I haven't seen nothing happen in months, anything. Lindenwood has never on purpose done anything for Belleville. The only thing that Lindenwood only looks out after Lindenwood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Michael Hagbert. My comments are about the resolution on tonight's Agenda 3240. And I'd like to know who's responsible for writing this resolution and omitting critical information. And Section 1 states that the reportable earnings to IMRF, the following tax exemption allowances, but there's no comment as to what those allowances are or any detail about them. I also want to know if the date of 2011 was a mistake or if this is really something that's retroactive for the past five years. And if it is retroactive for the past five years, how much is it going to cost the city to match those earnings that IMRF now says that are taxable and IMRF, they want the city to do their match on it? And the next question is, why did this not go to finance? And why is it coming directly to the city council? Shouldn't something like this, a dealing with money, especially if it's retroactive for five years, go before finance before it comes to this committee? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dale Went, South 27th Street. I've been here the last two meetings to talk about the issues we've had there. And I will say, the last couple of weeks, we have had a little better luck with the students not having trash in the yard. I did notice the other day, somebody from Lindenwood walking the neighborhood, picking the trash up and so forth. There's still some issues going on there. But I'm actually here more to talk about this article that was in the newspaper that you wrote, Mr. Mayor, and some of the points that you made here, I just have a couple of comments on. It's a special use permit we have a problem with, like my neighbors have spoken with, and the number of students in there. You say they want to limit two students to a bedroom and we've already know of homes that they have more than two students per bedroom in. And on there, it said that Lindenwood apologized for, you know, not having the permits, yet we're seeing students continue to move in houses without permits, which I don't think's right. I agree with you that we should not have moved kids out because of the mistake, but we have been seeing some cars come and people unloading stuff. So obviously, they've got some additional students moving into some houses there. And, you know, you said we did not come to you with these issues. We went, and some of my neighbors went to Lindenwood and talked to them about our issues well before all this started and nothing happened. Then we came to one of these meetings and you yourself, Mayor, had a special meeting and called us. So we have worked with you.
I understand that. That was, okay, we can, you know, I can explain. I'm not going to answer all the questions.
I'm not asking.
But I'll be glad, I'll be glad to address some of these if you contact me.
Okay. And I just wanted to, you know, this is a one-sided letter because they're hearing from you and, you know, it says half-truths. Well, personally, my personal opinion is there's half-truths written in here. You know, it was from one side for one goal and none of the other stuff, so that's why I'm addressing this. And so we did contact those and, you know, the inspections that you said they will be, well, that was something at the special meeting that you and the gentleman from the housing, city housing, were said, no, they weren't going to inspect them. So is that something currently written in their things? Annual, I'm sorry, annual inspections?
No, that's, that's now being proposed. We said originally it wasn't.
Right, but the way it reads in here is it's always been, so, you know, it's slanted. That's all I wanted to say. And I'm not really, I'm not really happy with the way this read at all, personally.
Okay, well, just understand one thing. First of all, I got a couple of calls today. I did not write that headline on the story.
Okay.
Okay, that's number one. That was done by the paper. And I have not taken my document and compared word to word, but I will tell you, in the past, there have been times when there have been some edits to some of the things I have written. So I have not had the time today to hold them up against each other. And I've just learned a long time ago, when you get criticized about things that you're quoted on in the newspaper, et cetera, sometimes you just got to smile because they're not always 100%.
I understand.
Not that they don't, you know, for the most part, recently, I've been real, recent months, we've been pretty good. But I haven't held it up and looked at it exactly. And I definitely did not write the headline. I did not write a title to it. Okay? But some of those other questions, if you have some follow-up questions for Mr. Sabo or I, we will be glad to talk to you. And I.
I mean, we're still, we're still, you know, our main thing here is this special use permit. You know, that's, that's our main thing. A lot of this other stuff, you know, we've talked about.
And we are, we are working and I'm glad, I appreciate you're admitting that some of the things are being recognized and are being addressed.
All right, thank you.
We haven't quit. Is there, yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Keith Rash, live on South High Street here in Belleville. And I want to see about Sunday liquor sales stopped in Belleville. It would cut down the crime considerably. And then, number two, since we can no longer have campfires and, you know, stuff like that, we need to have a shredder or chipper available to different neighborhoods on special days so that we can clean the debris rather than have to package it up and put it in trash cans. And I noticed some of the, on South Jackson Street, some of the rental properties that were over there, city came through there, dropped off a shredder, they shredded all the debris from storms and took it and it was gone.
If we had a very, if we had some severe weather, we have from time to time, gone into different neighborhoods and helped clean up. But it's only been due to severe weather.
Okay. So we have severe weather. I've got stuff in my yard still from severe weather that I can't do anything with. So I think we need to.
Have you ever contacted the city?
Not really.
Okay, so I mean, if, you know, I think you'd find that most of the departments are real good to work with.
Okay.
You know, I think if you contact, Mr. Parks is here from the street department. If you contact them, at least let them see, they might give you some advice how we can work together. We, our goal is to get the stuff cleaned up.
Right.
For safety purposes and for aesthetics in the neighborhoods. So I think you'll find they'll try to work with you, but we do have the yard waste program. And in severe weather, we do go and go the extra mile to help citizens who have a lot of limbs down unexpectedly.
Okay, I got one other thing. The Canadian National Railroad down here on South High Street. I've been calling for over two years to try to get that crossing repaired. And finally, this weekend, I don't know, I think it was Saturday, one of the railroad ties came up about eight inches off the ground. Police were there and they got it all cordoned off and everything. They told me Saturday that they would be here Monday at 8:30 to start working on it. And my view is, we need to, or the city or somebody, we need to figure out a way to communicate with Canadian National better. I don't know what the process is or anything.
Our city engineer contacts them. Are you aware of this recent report this weekend, Tim?
Yeah, it just happened.
So we will, he will contact them. I will tell you this, if any of you in this room have some inside advice how to deal with the railroads, we're open to it. Because it is, it is, it is an extremely difficult challenge. They are very independent. We will call them tomorrow and we will follow up on South High Street. Now, a few of the, few of the intersections that we've been on them about for years have finally gotten taken care of. We got two of them this year for sure, three of them maybe, but it's an ongoing battle. But we'll, we'll get on South High Street right away.
As soon as they go and start work, I live right there, so I guess I could call them, Ray. And we can, because I know there'll be supervisor people down there, because the guys I talked to Saturday, they were saying that they don't, they couldn't believe that the track inspector had let that go that long.
I can't believe a lot with the railroads, but we'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay? Good information. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Diane Rogie. I'm here to clear up a few half-truths about the Belleville residential ordinance in question and the over-occupancy of the Lindenwood houses. Whether we're talking about an A1 single-family or an A2 two-family zoned home, the occupancy rules remain the same. The key word is family. City ordinance number 4770, Section 2, defines a family as follows. Two or more persons, each related to the other by blood, marriage, or adoption, all living together as a single household unit and using common kitchen facilities. That is a related family. Or three or fewer persons, all of whom are not necessarily related to each of the others by blood, marriage, or adoption, all living together in a single household, a single housekeeping unit using common kitchen facilities. That is an unrelated family. So in a duplex, which has two kitchens, you could technically have three unrelated adults on each side. A house which has one kitchen could only have three unrelated adults total. This ordinance is across the board for all residential houses in Belleville. The A1 single-family and the A2 two-family designation has no bearing. What is in question is a special use permit that exempts Lindenwood from this ordinance. A special use permit that does not exist. Therefore, Lindenwood is being allowed to illegally occupy homes while the mayor and the staff scramble to correct the mistake. Many of these homes have been occupied without the proper permit for over two years. What we as neighbors are asking for is fair and equal justice under the law as covered under the 14th Amendment. If in fact, limiting the number of unrelated adults to three was a poor ordinance adopted in 1990, then maybe it should be eliminated for all residents. But I think we can all agree that this is a necessary regulation. That being said, then Lindenwood needs to be brought into compliance and our residential neighborhoods need to be restored. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, where, both?
Cassidy Bierman. I'm just going to speak a little bit about Lindenwood. There comes a time when you think you've said just about all you can say on this topic. However, prior to the canceled zoning meetings, a Facebook page called Citizens for Lindenwood was created by a seemingly odious person, rather, who rather than using social media to simply create a group of common interest, used a platform to slander a local business, make Lindenwood coming off sounding like a savior of our neighborhoods, and even used inflammatory remarks to rally troops calling for, quote, rabble rousing. I'm struck with a greater disappointment with seeing the number of elected officials or people of authority who liked remarks or commented. Does the opinions of a faceless social media page really mean more than the words of the involved neighbors who've taken up their free time to write letters and attend these meetings? And like social media followers, it is all too easy to be a simple minion to an idea. I'm asking that on all the previously mentioned points with regards to Lindenwood, its false adherence to Belleville City guidelines and the adverse effects that's causing the neighborhoods and the community as a whole, that you take time to back your vote with care and attention to all the facts. Only then can the quality decision be reached. In the words of former Belleville West Principal and now Alderman Philip Silsby, "Quality only happens when you care enough to do your best." Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gene Bierman. I would like to again speak in opposition to the city granting any special use permit that changes the occupancy of any residences in current single-family or two-family zoning. We are not against Lindenwood University in general. We are very much in favor of maintaining the integrity of Belleville's existing neighborhoods from the poaching that has occurred by Lindenwood. When I made a few remarks at the last city council meeting, it was in anticipation of Lindenwood's application for a special use permit being presented for preliminary hearing at the city's Board of Zoning Appeals, followed by being formally considered at this council meeting. As you're all aware, that application was withdrawn. In my personal opinion, it seemed like Lindenwood may have been concerned they could not achieve the approval. Instead of confronting it, risking denial, their easier course is to simply continue in violation because thus far, no one has done much to slow them. My speculation is that LU hopes the taxpayers will grow weary and the opposition to their SUP will evaporate. And why would LU, why would LU be expanding their SUP for more properties? Is it because they have been in some residences unchecked for a couple of years already? At the last council meeting, I had asked each of you on the council, like before acting on this request, to take a few minutes to fully examine in person the neighborhoods in which Lindenwood is asking to further expand their housing and look closely, not just at the main street facades, but the side streets and the backyards and really see what's happening. And again, we ask you to consider, would you want those conditions to prevail in your neighborhood? If not, why is it acceptable for the taxpaying citizens of West A, South 27th, 29th, and surrounding areas? Are their homes any less important to the integrity of our city? Or are they to be considered sacrificial lambs or collateral damage to whatever expansion LU wishes to do? The attempts I have made to inquire of the university's master plan is, have been met with secrecy and diversion. According to Lindenwood's president, a new master plan is under development and may be ready to share in a year or so. We are supposed to believe they have been developing this campus for 10 years and are now getting around to laying out a master plan. Seems to me their tactics have become very clear with the latest group of purchases. Fill up the neighborhoods with as many students as they can, let the students be students, disrupt the peace and quiet, and push the families out so their purchase prices can be as low as possible. More recently, we've been told Lindenwood will only house six students in a three-bedroom house. But who is controlling them from converting the living room and dining rooms into additional bedrooms, calling it a five-bedroom house, and pushing 10 students onto a 50 by 100-foot lot? These structures, these building lots, these 100-year-old streets in general and the infrastructure simply is not there to support these increases and that is just too many college kids and cars to cram into these neighborhoods. Please tell the school, the. the limit by current law should remain at three unrelated adults in single-family residences. Please start enforcing that tomorrow morning. LU's overbooking is not really the city's problem to solve. And speaking of LU's problems, being confused with the responsibility of the city of Belleville, I believe the city council in particular and the taxpayers in general would like to know why the taxpayers of Belleville have to take on the task of using a city street department employee to pick up trash from the Lindenwood student housing. How many other multimillion-dollar private entities and corporations are getting that daily service from the city? Lastly, I believe the city council should inquire the city attorney, who or rather what entity is legally responsible should there be an accident such as a fire, traffic fatality, or molestation occur in one of these overcrowded neighborhoods, either in university housing or adjoining, adjoining properties? Do all parties clearly understand their culpability and liability associated with the current waiving of the building codes? If all agree to accept that liability, what is the city's exposure? I would ask the council to initiate that discussion with the parties involved. Please put the line in the sand right now. Don't wait for Lindenwood to get around to asking permission. Tell them to follow the rules, restore the occupants of these homes to their legal limit, and stop this ongoing abuse of the Belleville neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay. There's no one else we're gonna... Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name's Alex Senyard, and I want to voice my support for the council approving the amended zoning variance for Lindenwood student housing. Lindenwood has done wonders for the area and created hundreds of jobs in Belleville and brought in tremendous amounts of business. Granting Lindenwood the student, the zoning variance allows them to increase student housing, increase business coming to Belleville. Furthermore, we want to increase the investment that their main campus has made in our city. If people are worried about the conditions in student housing, they should go look at the current student housing and also go over to the St. Charles campus and see how they maintain their properties. It's far better than most private landlords or private landowners in the area. Furthermore, college kids and college students do not need as much space as settled adults. It's dorm life, and you can fit more, more college students in a house versus regular settled individuals as long as they're maintained to fire and safety code. I've had the pleasure of having several Lindenwood students as interns where I work, and I gotta say, they are not hooligans. They are great students and they are great young adults. Thank you.
Hearing nothing else, I'm going to close public participation. We will move into the regular portion of the meeting, approval of the minutes. Here the city council minutes from September twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. Do I hear motion to accept and file? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Diddleman, do I hear discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes from two thousand, from September twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, accepting and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and disbursements, we have it broke down, but can I have a motion to pay the claims, the claims and the disbursements and also the payroll as stated here in your packet? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports, zoning board of appeals.
Eleven A one, case twenty-six, September fifteenth, Jeffrey DeBoe, Flip Mode Physique, request for assigned installation permit for area of special control and order placed to two-by-four window graphics at one-ten Mascud Avenue located in a C-two heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion is zoning code fifty-three dash four dash one.
Anybody have a problem with reading the next one together?
No.
Okay, you want separate? Okay. Okay, so-
Motion to approve it.
Motion to approve this one, do I hear a second?
I'll move.
Second by Alderman Tyler, do I hear any discussion on case number eleven A dash one? All in favor of approving this case and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Eleven A two, case twenty-seven, September fifteenth, Tim and Lisa Boone, Seri Rockta Wellness, request for a use variance in order to expand existing business Seri Rockta Wellness to include parcels zero-eight dash twenty-two point zero dash twenty-two nine dash zero-zero four and zero-eight dash twenty-two point zero dash two-two nine dash zero-zero five for the use of yoga classes, personal coaching, specialized personal training, nutrition coaching, and massage therapy located in A1 single-family zoning district. Applicable portions of zoning code sixty dash six dash four.
Can I hear a motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Kinsella. Making a motion to approve?
No.
Yes.
Do I hear a second? Motion to approve this request and have the proper ordinance drawn. Motion was by Ken Kinsella, second was by Joe Hazel. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Discussion, I'd like to amend it to include the words, name of applicant only.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that? Usually that's something we usually do per se- anyway, right? So the motion here would be to include in the name of applicant only. So with that amendment accepted by both parties, all in favor of this motion, A eleven A dash two, to have the, approve and to have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Mr. Sillsby, do you want to read this one or-
Sure, no, I can. From the library committee, motion to accept the low bid of thirty-seven thousand nine eighty from Bellows Heating and Cooling for the replacement of a steam boiler at the main library. Monies will come from TIF three, so moved.
Okay, we have motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Diddleman. I think the key word is there, they're requesting monies from TIF three. Leander, you want to address this or Kenny? I think we looked at this boiler during the project. We didn't know it was going to go out. We were trying to stretch to dollars. Somebody want to just comment to that and where we're at? Give them a little bit of insight.
As you're all aware, we recently finished renovation of the main library. The heating and cooling system was not addressed during the renovation because that was taken care of during a previous energy efficiency grant. However, this particular aspect of the HVAC system was not touched under that grant because it was deemed that it would not save any significant money, so it was not covered under the efficiency grant. Beginning of this year, we were advised by the state that the boiler would no longer pass inspection and we would have to replace it. With the renovation going over budget because of some unexpected expenses, the library's reserves were all but depleted, so it was suggested that we acquire the money from TIF to do this necessary placement.
Just for a little history to this council, we have TIF, the library does sit in TIF three, correct, Jamie? And we did use it a few years ago when unexpectedly, in the heat of summer, one of the air conditioning units went out, correct Kenny? So this is not the first time, but as he explained, during the remodeling process, even though we were blessed with the grant and donations, they raised money, et cetera, renovations were very aggressive and they have dipped into even funds that they have, so surplus. So this is the request. We gotta, gotta have heat for the winter time. It's, it's not, it's, it's now, just now, we know, found out not too long ago that it's, it's no longer cranking. So it needs to be done. Any further discussion? Do we have, we have a motion, we have a second discussion?
What TIF is the library in?
Library's actually in TIF three. See, originally, originally it, it ju, it jumps around.
Goes around the library?
Yeah, seventeen was created to fill it with, the way I was told, TIF three was created back in the eighties. I was not on the council. But there was a lot of people downtown at the time that chose to be carved out. The city fathers chose to put the library in TIF three originally because they knew that it was a city building, a city-owned building, that we had responsibility for that building. So it was always in TIF three. It was later on that we farmed TIF seventeen because over the years, the business people, some of the new owners of buildings, et cetera, were requesting that some of their old buildings be in this, in a TIF to be considered because they were running into a lot of cost, costly repairs for trying to bring these buildings up to code. So, yes, sir?
Do you have funds anywhere else that you could tap?
All our reserves are all but tapped out.
I'm asking, could we possibly cover it with our own reserves? Yes, and that would
tap us out completely because we went, I'll say a hundred thousand dollars over expected budget due to unforeseen problems with renovation.
Well, we, for example, the, the fire renovations, the sprinkler alone, that was another one that we didn't see.
Over a hundred thousand dollars.
It was right there too. Because we had to move the water line, didn't we Kenny and all that? So-
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We've invested way too much money in a Carnegie library, not to improve this, I mean, over a million dollars in, in improvements. It's, it's a gem in the city. We'd be very remiss, I personally, I don't think the bid's bad, but one question, Lee, we've got the base bid to replace the boiler for thirty-seven. The alternate bid, is that work that you're looking at doing down the road? That's not going to happen right now?
When we spoke with the architect and the engineers for this project, they brought forth two proposals. The proposal before you is to replace the system as is with the comparable system. The second bid would be to replace it with a high-efficiency hot water system, which would be much more efficient, but as you can see, is twice the cost. So for cost reasons, we're opting with the straight replacement of the existing system.
So then why aren't we considering both of these?
Well, I think what we were talking about, we're already requesting, they're requesting TIF, but it's actually double or more to go to the, the newer, more efficient system. And how many years we got of that? The current boiler, Kenny, we got, how many years are that boiler?
I think it's like thirty.
Yeah, about thirty years.
So Kenny, how many can we expect if we go with this bid here, thirty-seven something? What are we looking, are we looking another twenty, twenty-five years on this?
I have a-
Okay.
Graphic. Kenny, that was my question. You saying it was going to be longer in terms of how many years, thirty years?
It would take us longer than what we expect the shelf life or the actual usable life of this system to be in place to recoup the additional expenses compared to the high efficiency.
We, we found this even with like the police sta, police station looking at with the architects. Lot, lot of the high-efficiency things sound great, but when you really get down to really comparing apples to apples, some of them aren't quite, when you're replacing, you know, exactly what they, they sound like. So we've been, we've been listening to the advice of our architect and to the engineers and, and to the, the professionals. In this particular case here, the payback just didn't seem to be worthy for us to go to double the amount, Roger, that's why, why we could. Trent?
Wasn't this renov, wasn't this renovation initially much lower estimate and that we kept adding things on to it over the course of time?
Well, I think like anything, Trent, if you remember, we added some things, but some things kind of unraveled. I think when you, when you started to get into some of the areas that hadn't been touched in thirty-five years or more, we discovered some things. And as was alluded to earlier, this Carnegie, Carnegie library is a beautiful facilities, but we had not, really since nineteen seventy renovation, I guess it was Kenny, or seventy-three or something like that, there had been no major anything done to that library until really recently, since early seventies. So forty years.
Do, do you recall initially, I, I mean, when we first did this or started talking about it, do you, do you recall initially what the, what the estimate was for what we were initially going to do?
Well, when they were initially, Leander, it was going to be more. We cut it back.
I do not recall the exact dollar amount, but to answer your question, initially, the project was to renovate the main library only. When the bids came in-
Okay.
-the bids came in significantly less than we anticipated, so the expanded work was to do work at the Branch Library, which originally was not slated to have anything done to it. So because we saved so much money at main, we did some cosmetic improvements at the Branch Library as well.
Do you remember how much cosmetic improvement was done at, at the Branch?
The Branch Library got new paint, new carpet, new computers, and some new furniture.
Do you remember-
The dollar amount, I cannot quote you right now off the top of my head.
Did it get AC also? Did it get-
Branch got a new HVAC unit approximately two years ago under a separate grant that was given to the-
And a new roof also.
And a new roof, yes, under a separate project.
Separate project. That was that energy grant, Kenny, part of that? So. Yes, sir.
What's left that hasn't been done on that library that we may hear about in two months?
Honestly, I can't tell you if anything else will come up. This is a hundred-year-old building.
Well, I don't understand why all this stuff wasn't addressed in the initial renovations. We come back with the sprinklers, now we come back with the heating.
The sprinklers was mandated by code that was not made of work to us until after the project started.
We were, we were well into the project before the sprinkler issue came forward, believe me. I wasn't happy with that. And quite honestly, we weren't sure for the longest time. We knew we had some things, we, we knew, okay, how this started, we had torn carpeting that was about seventeen years old that was becoming a trip and fall hazard. And we were bound to determine if we didn't get the grant from the state of Illinois for what, six hundred and some odd thousand or-
Five hundred ninety-two thousand.
Five hundred ninety-two thousand. We agreed that we were only going to basically be, probably come to the council and try to just do carpeting and emergency stuff. When we got that grant, then we decided to, while you're, when you're taking all, moving every shelf in there and you're pulling up the carpeting and you're moving the books, and that's a lot of movement, a lot of, lot of labor. That was when we decided to change the work areas that the staff was begging us to do for efficiency, to better monitor the computers, what people, what they were, you know, giving them help and service and keeping an eye on things. So we did some reconfigurations, as you might remember, when we, when we started, when we got luck, fortunate enough to get the grant from the state secretary of state's office. And that's what really triggered this thing getting bigger. But that didn't take away from the fact that we knew we had some old furnaces, boilers, and, and air conditioners. And unfortunately, while we didn't know it could have lived on several more years, it finally shot craps. So we, you know, we, you know, it was, it was, it was a dice roll. It could have went several years yet. So, so we have a motion and we have a second to approve this project from Bellows Heating and Cooling for the thirty-seven nine eighty coming out of TIF three. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
No.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Ice having. Okay, we move on to communications.
Twelve A, communication from Alderman Square to close Highway one fifty-nine at the Belleville Public Square for their event weekend, May thirteenth through the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, on Thursday, May twelfth, at twelve P.M. and reopen by eleven P.M. Sunday, May sixteenth. They are also asking to close a, a block of West Main, North Illinois, and South and two blocks of East Main.
Can we keep going?
Yeah.
Twelve B, communication from Amy Gould to close two hundred to three hundred block of Avon Street on Saturday, October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, from four P.M. until eleven thirty P.M. All residents on the street will be invited and trick-or-treaters will be able to walk down the street and still get candy. Neighbors from surrounding streets will also be invited, requesting street blockades. Twelve C, communication from Grant Eret of the Belleville Holt Schnitzer Wood Carvers, requesting permission to display their banner, Wood Carvers Demonstration Show, on November seventh and eighth, two thousand fifteen, at the Belclaire Expo Hall. Twelve D, communication from Royal Family Kids Camp, asking permission to have a five-k race, the Royal Run, on Saturday, March nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, beginning at nine A.M. It would begin and end at Optimus Park. A copy of the route is attached.
We have, after here, motion to approve?
I'll move.
Okay, motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Kinsella, discussion. Yes, sir?
I would like to go back and touch on twelve B. I believe this would be Alderman Seibert and Alderman White's ward, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Have you guys had conversation? Has this person, individual had this party before?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We had real issues over in my ward years ago with Halloween being closed up till eleven thirty and it just got out of hand. But if you're not concerned?
Yeah, whole different ballgame, I think, what you had years ago.
I don't, I don't even know.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve these four communications. There's no further questions. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, or motions carry. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, we have a, let's take them separately, I guess. Resolution thirty-two thirty-nine.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-two thirty-nine for the Santa Parade. It's a permit for Illinois Department of Transportation.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt. I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
The bids came in significantly less than we anticipated, so the expanded work was to do work at the branch library, which originally was not slated to have anything done to it. So, because we saved so much money at main, we did some cosmetic improvements at the branch library as well.
Do you remember how much cosmetic improvement was done at, at the branch?
The branch library got new paint, new carpet, new computers, and some new furniture.
Do you remember?
The dollar amount, I cannot quote you right now off the top of my head.
Did it get new AC also, did it get?
Branch got a new HVAC unit approximately two years ago under a separate grant that was given to the.
And a new roof also.
And a new roof, yes, under a separate project.
Separate project. That was that energy grant, Kenny, part of that? So. Yes, sir? What's left that hasn't been done on that library that we may hear about in two months?
Honestly, I can't tell you if anything else will come up, this is a hundred-year-old building.
Well, I don't understand why all this stuff wasn't addressed in the initial renovations. We come back with the sprinklers, now we come back with the heating.
The sprinklers was mandated by code that was not made of work to us until after the project started.
We were, we were well into the project before the sprinkler issue came forward, believe me, I wasn't happy with that. And, and quite honestly, we weren't sure for the longest time, we knew we had some things, we, we knew, okay, how this started, we had torn carpeting that was about seventeen years old that was becoming a trip and fall hazard, and we were bound to determine if we didn't get the grant from the state of Illinois for what, six hundred and some odd thousand, or?
Five hundred ninety-two thousand.
Five hundred ninety-two thousand. We agreed that we were only going to basically probably come to the council and try to just do carpeting and emergency stuff. When we got that grant, then we decided to, while you're, when you're taking all, moving every shelf in there, and you're pulling up the carpeting, and you're moving the books, and that's a lot of movement, a lot, a lot of labor, that was when we decided to change the work areas that the staff was begging us to do for efficiency, to better monitor the computers, what people, what they were, you know, giving them help and service and keeping an eye on things, so we did some reconfigurations, as you might remember, when we, when we started, when we got luck, fortunate enough to get the grant from the state secretary of state's office, and that's what really triggered this thing getting bigger. But that didn't take away from the fact that we knew we had some old furnaces, boilers, and, and air conditioners, and unfortunately, while we didn't know it could have lived on several more years, it finally shot craps. So, we, you know, we, you know, it was, it was, it was a dice roll, that could have won several years yet. So, so we have a motion and we have a second to approve this project from Bellville Heating and Cooling for the thirty-seven nine eighty coming out of TIF three. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Ayes have it. Okay, we move on to communications.
Twelve A, communication from Alderman Square to close Highway one fifty-nine at the Bellville Public Square for their event weekend, May thirteenth through the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, on Thursday, May twelfth, at twelve P.M., and reopen by eleven P.M. Sunday, May sixteenth. They are also asking to close a, a block of West Maine, North Illinois, and South and two blocks of East Maine.
Can we keep going?
Yeah.
Twelve B, communication from Amy Gould to close two-hundred to three-hundred block
of Avon Street on Saturday, October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, from four P.M. until eleven-thirty P.M. All residents on the street will be invited, and trick-or-treaters will be able to walk down the street and still get candy. Neighbors from surrounding streets will also be invited, requesting street blockades. Twelve C, communication from Grant Eret of the Bellville Holt Schnitzer Wood Carvers, requesting permission to display their banner, Wood Carvers Demonstration Show, on November seventh and eighth, two thousand fifteen, at the Belclair Expo Hall. Twelve D, communication from Royal Family Kids Camp, asking permission to have a five-k race, the Royal Run, on Saturday, March nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, beginning at nine A.M. It would begin and end at Optimus Park, a copy of the route is attached.
We have, after here, motion to approve?
No move.
Okay, motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Kinsella, discussion, yes, sir?
I would like to go back and touch on twelve B, I believe this would be Alderman Cybert and Alderman White's ward, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Have you guys had conversation? Is this person, individual had this party before?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We had real issues over in my ward years ago with Halloween being closed up till eleven-thirty, and it just got out of hand, but if you're not concerned?
Yeah, whole different ballgame, I think, what you had years ago.
I don't, I don't even know him.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve these four communications, there's no further questions, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, or motions carry, petitions, we have none, resolutions, we have, let's take them separately, I guess, resolution thirty-two thirty-nine.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-two thirty-nine for the Santa Parade, it's a permit for Illinois Department of Transportation.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt, I hear any discussion? All in favor of reading those two resolutions by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, you want to proceed with thirty-two forty?
Sure. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-two forty to include clothing allowances and earnings to IMRF.
I guess first of all, I need to, Mr. Attorney has got it, read by title only. Okay, I need to go back and, while we already had the vote on the first one, can I just ask you, so we can include it in the minutes, we all did it by habit, but to read, we did read the first one, but I want to get your approval on thirty-two thirty-nine and thirty-two forty to read those resolutions by title only. Do I hear motion on that? Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Diddleman, to read them both by title only, even though we, if nobody's going to be objecting or having a real problem with, we already had the resolution on Santa Claus passed. All in favor of reading those two resolutions by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, you want to proceed with thirty-two forty?
Sure. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-two forty to include clothing allowances and earnings to IMRF.
I guess first of all, I need to, Mr. Attorney has got it, read by title only. Okay, I need to go back and, while we already had the vote on the first one, can I just ask you, so we can include it in the minutes, we all did it by habit, but to read, we did read the first one, but I want to get your approval on thirty-two thirty-nine and thirty-two forty to read those resolutions by title only. Do I hear motion on that? Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Diddleman, to read them both by title only, even though we, if nobody's going to be objecting or having a real problem with, we already had the resolution on Santa Claus passed. All in favor of reading those two resolutions by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, you want to proceed with thirty-two forty?
Sure. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-two forty to include clothing allowances and earnings to IMRF.
Do I hear motion first of all, to get it on the floor? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
Second, I'm sorry, Johnny, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Jamie, do you want to try to explain any of this, where this?
This came from the payroll clerk's office, based on IMRF audit.
Can we go to the, I can't hear her.
Okay, she says this, this request came from Mary in the payroll down the clerk's office, it's from the IMRF audit, right?
Yeah, it was a necessity in order to comply with IMRF rules and standards.
Okay, Garrett?
If I could, the, the resolution is formatted virtually verbatim from an IMRF form, resolution six point seven four. The only words that are different, I think it might be, just be a typo, is the phrase the following in section one, "This type of resolution is intended to make all taxable expense allowances also subject to IMRF," and I assume probably what arose out of the audit was that it's something you're already doing, it's common for government, governing bodies, subject to IMRF to do this, they just have to have a, a resolution for their records, and that's why it arose out of the audit, very common.
Yes, sir?
Is, is this retroactive, actually retroactive to two thousand eleven, and is there a cost incurred by the city?
I wasn't, I wasn't consulted about this, but that wouldn't be the norm to consult me about this, I'm assuming the effective date was based upon when the city started to report it as earnings, so I'm assuming that any costs associated with this have already been paid, this is just to have a resolution that is covering what the city's practice is.
Well, my question would be, is this increased pensionable amount?
It does, and then any, any costs associated on both sides would, would be incurred. It, it, it reports taxable expense allowances as reportable earnings under IMRF. But it's something, if it arose from the, if it arose from the IMRF audit, in all likelihood, it's something that you're already doing, and the resolution is, is to, for compliance purposes.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, do we have a motion and a second on this one, just, yeah, we do, fund this particular resolution to thirty-two forty, if there's no further questions, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye. Motion carries. Ardenances, we have ardenances seventy-eight ninety-four, seventy-eight ninety-five, seventy-eight ninety-six. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hazel, do I hear discussion? All in favor of reading those ardenances by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Fifteen A. Does anybody have a problem reading them as a group? Okay, read on.
Fifteen A, ordinance seventy-eight ninety-four, two thousand fifteen, case twenty-six, Jeffrey DeBeau, flip mode physique. Fifteen B, ordinance seventy-eight ninety-five, two thousand fifteen, Tim and Lisa Boone, Sir Yurokta Wellness. Fifteen C, ordinance seventy-eight ninety-six, schedule O, handicap, five-twelve North First Street, in front of building for current resident only, one-oh-nine North Michigan, twenty-seven thirteen, Brook Meadow. Schedule C one, two-way stop intersections, West Lincoln Street and South East Street.
We have motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt, to approve those ardenances as just read. Any further discussion? Yes, sir? Just to stipulate on seventy-eight ninety-five, that we add the words to that applicant only. To applicant only, remember that would be added also to the ordinance on seventy-eight ninety-five, thank you. There's no objections to that, or further questions, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.